Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge and be adjourned to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call roll.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Trachis?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, will you have a form?
I move for the approval of the journal of the meeting of June 6, 2017.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have no bid openings today, so we move communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises this evening. We will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the matter be referred to the plaintiff's commission for adoption of a resolution of intent in public hearing on the matter as recommended.
So ordered.
Item number two, 6th District.
Proceed and file, please.
So ordered.
Item number three, 6th District.
Proceed and file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
We'll move to other communications. Under other communications, item number one.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive, file, and the county, and refer this to the committee of the whole, and that will be the order.
Item number three, 5th and 6th Districts.
Proceed and file.
So ordered.
Item number four.
Receive, file, and refer to the Justice and Health Committee. That will be the order.
Item number five.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number six, 4th District.
Receive, file, and request for approval, with conditions be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item number seven, all districts.
Proceed and file, and that will be the order.
Item number eight, 3rd District.
Proceed and file.
So ordered.
Item number nine.
Receive and file, same motion for number 10, and that will be the order. This, we will continue to have dialogue about the opportunity to work with the state auditor, and I'm still waiting for my response on the letter that I wrote to our county council regarding the unfilled position of the internal auditor in the county auditor's office, which has been frozen by the administrative staff, and county council has communicated to me that he'll have a response to that in a week. Number 11.
Item number 11, 1st District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and a copy of this report be sent to the city of Floridale Hills.
So ordered.
Item number 12, 5th District.
Receive, file, and the appointment be approved as requested.
Second.
Do you want to refer this? Before we approve it? It's an appointment.
Oh, yeah.
We should probably have a hearing on this, Councilmember Dolan. It's an appointment.
May I amend my motion?
Yes, sir.
Receive, file, and the matter be held on the order of business, and refer it to the council as a committee of the whole.
How about refer to committee on revenue and personnel? It's where we're doing appointments these days. That will be, that will be the order. Thank you for your motion.
Item number 13, 3rd.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Refer to the committee on revenue and personnel. That will be the order.
Who should we reflect that as? Your motion or?
Yeah, whose motion was it?
The committee chair refers bills. The committee sponsor of the bill makes the motion to hold or approve a bill. So ordered. Refer to committee on revenue and personnel. So ordered.
Item number 14, 5th District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 15.
Proceed and file. That will be the order. Same motion through 17. Please read the add-ons.
Mr. Chairman, we have one add-on this evening. Item number one, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, please.
So ordered. We have no county executive report tonight, so no reports from special committees, public forum.
We have four speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Please approach the podium when your name's called, and give us your address, and please keep your comments to three minutes for a speaker.
First speaker this evening is Deborah Erp.
My name is Deborah Erp, and I live at 7933 Harlan in Afton. And I'm not here about the gravel roads, because according to the newspaper, it was said that they're not going to be reduced. I came into these first few meetings not being friends with anyone, and not knowing anyone, and not really realizing how the county works. In the last few weeks, I've been on the phone a lot with different people, and I've gotten the election address and mailing, and so on and so forth, and it seems to me that...I don't know how you tell when someone's doing something intentionally that might not be the right decision. And the only person that has been rude to me is a person that is fighting a gentleman who owns a small business. In all my life, I have worked for a small business, all my life. If I would have worked for a big business, maybe I would understand what you all do better. But you guys work hard and long hours, and some of the stuff I've seen on the website that you have to deal with seems a little silly. I have a question that I would like you to answer me if you could. If it's a personal matter that someone is saying no to someone, and there's not really any truthful reasons that have been given to stop a company from moving on, how do you approach it with your council? That's my question. That's, that's the thing that they told me I'd have to ask the council, and I'm upset that he's not here, because the first night I was here, I was upset that all of the windows are darkened on people's cars, and after seeing some of the anger and hearing some of the things that were said to me, I quit coming to the meetings, number one, and number two, I don't think people should have the right to come up and curse to anyone, or yell at you, or be mean to you. I just, I would like to know then, how you stop that, and how you stop one person trying to stop other people from advancing their lives. Did I say that right? I don't know. I only have 38 minutes. Can you answer? This is not, I'm, I'm not being humorous. This is a serious, serious question. I hate that I'm here again, but someone needs to tell me how one goes about when something is started before, before it's said no to, and it goes through planning, and everything is approved, how people can stop things that make sense, and how I can be told that Steve Stanger moved the election board up to Northwest Plaza because the guy contributed to his campaign, and it's a favor.
That's three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and I would encourage you to continue to participate in the political process. We won't always have questions or answers for you, but stay in contact with your council member, and, and this is a good forum to express your concerns.
Shall I express them in writing to all of you of what I feel is going on unfairly, or is it obvious in all these meetings? I've watched a lot of the tapes, and it doesn't seem obvious. It seems like for every positive person that's here, a person can have a negative person here, too. I don't know how you tell the difference when you're voting on stuff. You put in, you put in a lot of long hours. I commend you. That's why I don't know anything about politics. I wouldn't have this job.
Mr. Chair.
Come here.
Sure.
I know we don't have time for each one of us to give you feedback right now, but if you call me, I'm perfectly happy to share my feelings.
I've talked to quite a few people, so I'm under the understanding that there's a legal way of going about it, but when they told me you couldn't do a mailing, I didn't realize there was many voters in there. So doing a mailing is, is a very difficult thing, but re-electing or asking people to vote on, on things so that one person is not making a decision is not unfair.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Scott Coleman.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for having me. Like she said, you guys do a lot of work for the Sunlowes County. Appreciate that. Years ago, when I was born, I asked my daddy about, when I was five, six years old, I said, "What's so great about living in America?" He said, "Well, son, you can do anything you want to do, as long as it's legal, of course. You can be the man you want to be. You can even run for president. Just put your mind to it, okay? Treat people the way you want to be treated, and you do well in this world." Entrepreneurs are the backbone of America. They started this country, and they raised this country, and made it as great as it is today because of entrepreneurs. I personally am one. I've been in the business of bar restaurants for over 18 years. I've got a very good friend of mine sitting in the audience here, his name's Rob McManus. He's been trying for eight months, if not better, to get permission to move into a building. Now, the gentleman's history, everybody already knows. He's went to three locations, if not four locations, since he started back in the late 80s. I know I was with him on three of them. Unfortunately, I lost my wife in 95 to a car wreck. We split ways for a while, and then I went back to work for him. When you guys see a big snowfall coming in, and you can't get out of your driveways, most of the schools can't get to school because they're all clogged up with snow. This is a job that McManus does. He runs a big, huge, probably one of the largest, in the Sunlowes area, and he clears them streets for them kids. I know, because I personally am one of them that does it. We're out there in the middle of the night, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, folks, worrying about how we're going to get these things done in a proper manner. And for somebody to be able to sit here and said, "No," after you already blocked the building, and won't even present it to the rest of the council so you can get a fair shake, it's beyond me. On the other side of the meeting, we all stood here and pledged our allegiance to the flag. Folks, I want to know, where's the liberty and justice in this? Because he's not getting it, and nor is his other temporary people that he hired in the winter time. If he's told he can't do his business on top of a hill that nobody really wants to get into, I mean, it's backed by a friggin' interstate and a construction yard here, and a resident that's here that is encouraged, has been here and talked many times for him, and a bowling alley. What is wrong with it? I mean, how do you go about going over somebody's head that's on the council and saying, "Folks, are you hearing me? This man's civil liberties is being challenged here. He can't make a living. I mean, he, he did what he, he moved into another building before he come into office, and now he's being told he can't do it. What's fair about that? How can Rob correct it? I mean, I'm understanding that's being sent back through planning and zoning again. For what? We all know what he does. You all heard it.
Three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, thanks for your comments.
All right. Thank you for hearing me.
Next speaker is Rob McManus.
Good evening. My name is Rob McManus. I've not spoken the past few weeks, but I've sat in the audience and listened to Lynn LeBeau speak against us for several weeks, and I just wanted to clear a few things up. From her May 2, 2017 speech, one of her comments was, "I don't know," and I quote, "I don't know Ernie, the county councilman." That is an untruth there. From May 16, 2017, she quotes, "Snow Pro is one of the largest distributors of chemically treated salt for the Saint Louis and surrounding areas." That is untrue. We buy from the distributors. We're one of the small guys. She also quotes, "In fact, it has been reported that hundreds of snowplows will be embarking at this address during seasonal weather to obtain chemically treated salt, sodium chloride and calcium chloride. In addition to the 24-hour, seven-days-a-week deliveries from the tractor-trailers bringing the salt in..." That's another misconception. We went back and looked at the records per the request of Ernie and Gail Schot. On the ice storm that shut down Saint Louis this year, we had 60 vehicles over a 24-hour period coming to pick up salt. She also quotes, "What will happen when the rain and these hazardous products are inunduced into the water table? Toxic material due to rain runoff will be inunduced into that area that will kill vegetation." She's speaking about us storing salt at that location. As said, "We've been in the snow removal business since 1997. We've been at our current location for eight years. I drove by there this morning just to see the conditions of our salt and our runoff. Anyone is welcome to drive by there. The grass is tall, the weeds are growing. Our salt that we've kept covered and dry does not run off into the storm sewers. We don't have runoff from our stored salt. The proof is in the pudding, drive by there. Where the water runs off, the grass is as green as it can be." On the May 16, she also quotes, "Was there a site or business plan?" Most of y'all know that to go through planning and zoning, you have to prepare a site plan and a business plan. That has presented, has been presented clearly. She doesn't know the requirements of what you have to go through through planning and zoning. On her May 23, 2017 speech, she speaks, "McManus has a company fleet of 20 trucks. However, this does not mention what kind of trucks. I do have a picture of tractor-trailers..."
That's great, Mr. Chair.
"...at the current Snow Pro location."
Mr. McManus, could you conclude?
Sure. She showed y'all pictures of trailers at our place. We own one semi-trailer that we use for a storage trailer, and on larger construction sites. We also have, that she had pictures of and showing y'all, have packed our entire shop up into tractor-trailers. We have six trailers rented, 53-foot semi-trailers. That's the tractor trailer she was speaking of. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Final speaker this evening is Angela McManus.
Hi, I'm Angela McManus. We live on Felicia Drive over in Afton. As you know, our request is to start using the commercial property on Lee May Ferry Road for McManus Construction and Snow Pro Parts Sales and Service. Although I didn't bring pictures again in tonight, I'm sure you can remember seeing the driveway that climbs the impressive block retaining wall up to the large, soon-to-be beautiful metal building that we will lovingly take care of and call home. Last week, I took time to go back to our old neighbors at the Donut Shop with a gift and a card of appreciation for being such great neighbors. I will miss them. We literally outgrew our last location, but now have immediate respect for the new one. Even though our neighbors at the new place are not as close in proximity, I've already started to see a good relationship developing in our new area. This afternoon, I was starting to get cold feet about this. This, as in presenting and petitioning, is not what we do. We help people. We build their dreams and fix their homes, and we also provide support for others that also have small businesses. Rob has been a longtime businessman in our area, actually for about 30 years now. He has a good rapport with many people, customers, representatives throughout the county and the various municipalities. When I look at the big picture here, I see this time of planning as an important step. This isn't something I'm to be afraid of. As a council, you have been gracious and cordial to me, and you have been approachable and patient. In closing during this time, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, while the arrangements are firming up at the extra meetings, I want to assure you of our ongoing openness and eagerness. You're always welcome to contact us with any questions, either individually or as a group, and thank you so much for your time and extra time as you worked to put this together for us.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
That concludes our public forum. Please proceed with the introduction of bills.
Bill number 144, introduced by councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $88,331 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, appropriating the same for support of a forensic scientist and crime laboratory equipment for the police department, authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 145, introduced by councilmember Harder, an ordinance amending ordinance number 26, 634 by repealing and reenacting section 2 pertaining to a contract with Mitchell and Huge Back Architects, Inc., for architectural services related to construction of a standardized general aviation facility for clearance of international passengers and crews at Spirit of Saint Louis Airport. Bill number 146, introduced by councilmember Page, an ordinance amending ordinance number 25, 296 as amended by repealing and reenacting sections 1 and 2 pertaining to a contract and renewals with Diamond Drugs, Inc., for pharmacy services for the Department of Public Health at the Buzz Westfall Justice Center. Bill number 147, introduced by councilmember Page, an ordinance amending ordinance number 25, 492 as amended by repealing and reenacting section 2 thereof pertaining to a contract with Lee Harv Distributors Missouri LLC for general pharmacy services for the Department of Public Health. Bill number 148, introduced by councilmember Page, an ordinance amending ordinance number 26, 528 as amended by repealing and reenacting sections 1 and 2 pertaining to a contract with Aprus, Inc., for services in connection with the prescription drug monitoring program, and authorizing contracts with participating counties, municipalities, and local public health agencies. Bill number 149, introduced by councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the Missouri Department of Mental Health for participation in a program targeted to respond to the opioid crisis. Bill number 150, introduced by councilmembers Page, Wassinger, and Trachis, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with SBC Contracting, Inc., for construction of new playgrounds in four county parks. Bill number 151, introduced by councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with KLD Enterprises, Inc., for concession stand and vending machine operations at the Fountain Lake Softball Center. Bill number 152, introduced by councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Food Corp, LLC for concessions and vending machine operations at Saint Vincent Community Center. Bill number 153, introduced by councilmember Page, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $207,365.84 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund for reimbursement for 14 total losses to police department vehicles. Bill number 154, introduced by councilmember Trachis, an ordinance amending Title 12, Saint Louis County Revised Ordinances, 1974 as amended, traffic code by enacting and adding one new provision to Schedule 6. Bill number 155, introduced by councilmember Harder, an ordinance providing for the vacation of a portion of excess right-of-way of Conway Road, petitioner Bonham Presbyterian Church, Inc. Bill number 156, introduced by councilmember Trachis, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of tax increment revenue notes, Afton Plaza Redevelopment Project, Series A and B of Saint Louis County, Missouri, to provide funds to finance certain redevelopment project costs and approving certain actions in connection with the issuance of the notes. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Perfection.
Yes. Bill number 121, introduced by councilmember Trachis.
Please hold Bill 121, please.
Bill 121 is held.
Bill number 130, introduced by councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill number 130, and to be sent to a committee on public works, to be, to meet on Tuesday.
So, your motion to hold is recognized. I'm announcing the establishment of a special committee on capital improvements, and we'll be on that committee.
Yes.
And we'll refer this bill to the Special Committee on Capital Improvements, and we will make our best effort, based on your request, to get that committee held and have this bill heard before our next council meeting.
Okay.
And that will be the order.
Bill number 139, introduced by councilmember Erby, for councilmember Page.
Hold on the order of business, and Bill number 139 is held.
Bill number 140, introduced by councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill number 140.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 140 is perfected.
Bill number 141, introduced by councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill number 141.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 141 is perfected.
Bill number 142, introduced by councilmember Dolan.
Move to perfect Bill number 142. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 142 is perfected.
Bill number 143, introduced by councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect Bill number 143.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 143 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 131, introduced by councilmember Erby, for councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, Bill number 131.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number 131, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 131 is finally passed.
Bill number 132, introduced by councilmember Erby, for councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, Bill number 132.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number 132, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 132 is finally passed.
Bill number 133, introduced by councilmember Erby, for councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, Bill number 133.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number 133, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 133 is finally passed.
Bill number 134, introduced by councilmember Erby, for councilmember Page.
I move for final passage, Bill number 134.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number 134, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 134 is finally passed.
Bill number 135, introduced by councilmember Erby.
I move for final passage, Bill number 135.
So, roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number 135, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 135 is finally passed.
Bill number 136, introduced by councilmember Erby, for councilmember Page.
I move for final passage, Bill number 136.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one thirty-six, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one thirty-six is finally passed.
Bill number one thirty-seven introduced by council member Erby for council member Page.
I move for final passage to bill number one thirty-seven.
Second.
Roll call.
Council member Erby?
Aye.
Council member Page?
Aye.
Council member Wassinger?
Aye.
Council member Gray?
Aye.
Council member Dolan?
Aye.
Council member Tracus?
Aye.
Council member Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one thirty-seven, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one thirty-seven is finally passed.
Bill number one thirty-eight introduced by council member Harder.
I move for final passage to bill number one thirty-eight.
Second.
Roll call.
Council member Erby?
Aye.
Council member Page?
Aye.
Council member Wassinger?
Aye.
Council member Gray?
Aye.
Council member Dolan?
Aye.
Council member Tracus?
Aye.
Council member Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number one thirty-eight, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one thirty-eight is finally passed.
We have no resolutions this evening, Mr. Chair, so we'll move to unfinished business. Under unfinished business, item number one.
Hold on the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive file and the appointment of Michael Thiemann and the reappointment of Kim Besseman and Sean Quinn be approved as requested and the remaining appointments be, and reappointments be held on the order of business.
Point.
What about Mr. Lattick?
We talked about Mike.
Yeah.
Is he in a subsequent bundle or is he-
Mr. Chair, he said his appointment's in a different communication.
It's in a different bundle, it's coming up.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for the acknowledgement. Sean Quinn and Kim Besseman.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number three, all districts.
Hold on the order of business.
Item number four.
Appointment of Michael Wiegand to be approved as requested and the reappointments be held on the order of business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number five.
Appointment of Michael Zlattick be approved as requested and the appointment of Randall Boder be held on the order of business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six.
Hold on the order of business.
Oh, I'm sorry, third, fourth and seventh districts, I'm sorry.
Pardon?
Item number six, third, fourth and seventh districts.
Yes, just hold on the order of business, the committee of the whole hearing is tomorrow.
So ordered.
And under new business this evening, Mr. Chair, we have four prepared orders.
I move for adoption of orders number one, two and three.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And please hold order number four on the order of business.
Order number four will be held.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries to adjourn, thank you.